So everybody's in.
Okay, all right. Well, welcome, everybody. This is the Northampton Planning Board meeting of January 26, two thousand and twenty-two. My name is George Coath. I'm the Chair of the Planning Board. There's nobody in the public audience, but we do have some folks here joining us through Zoom. Prior to opening up the the meeting, this is basically going to be a discussion about some issues that the Planning Board faces during the application processes relevant to some of the new ordinances that have come through the City Council for the city lately. Topics such as, you know, certainly affordable housing, the lack thereof, housing in general in the city, also some of the constraints on builders in terms of a lot, many items, costs of building materials and some of the city's progressive moves around fossil fuels. So the the Planning Board wants to have an opportunity to talk about those among themselves. And at one point, we will certainly take comments from the general public, probably through chat, that then Carolyn Miss, our staff, will relay out to the Planning Board and we'll entertain those later on. So I want to take the opportunity. We have someone else joining us from the Planning Office here. Nathan, you want to introduce yourself?
Hi, thank you. My name is Nathan Chung. I'm currently the Grants Administrator for the City of Northampton. And next week I'll be starting the position as the Land Use Planner in the same office. So I'm basically attending this meeting to learn about the process and to support you and Carolyn. So very nice to meet you.
Great. Welcome, Nathan. Nice to meet you, too. So where there's four members of the Planning Board here is, and I don't have a laptop, I can't see the participant list, is anybody in the Planning Board here via Zoom?
Yes, Chris Tate is on Zoom.
Hello, Chris. Good to see you, buddy. So we are five. Okay. So before we open up the discussion, we we traditionally have a period of public comment. If there's anyone who has an item they'd like to raise, oh, there are no applications in front of us, but a comment you'd like to raise for the Planning Board at this point. Please raise your hand on Zoom or, well, there's nobody here. Come to the podium.
Right, we're doing chat.
Chat. Oh, that's right.
I don't see.
Okay, great. So then let's open up this discussion. And a quick announcement, we are recording this. This, there's a video recording of the the meeting and also the items that may come up through chat. So just so everyone's aware of that. So today, the Board wants to take on a few items to discuss. Some of this has been raised by the working group of the City Council, which is called the Community Resources Work Group. They've had a couple of public meetings, informational sessions that have brought in outside experts around real estate, construction, affordable housing, topics like that. Last week, just this week, the Tree Warden came in to talk a little bit about the tree ordinances and the importance of trees in our community. And he was joined by a woman who does a lot of work with affordable housing and design and build, an architect who spoke really well about that. So some of the members of the Planning Board attended those meetings and they were very helpful for this fellow. For the past couple of years, we've been dealing with certainly housing applications that have come before us, that have caused discussing in the community, let's say. So I, Carolyn and I had a discussion about bringing this forward to the Board just to have that discussion when we're not faced with kind of the, not the pressure, but the immediacy of a specific application to talk more in generalities about what some of our ordinances are hoping to see the city developing and some of the national and state trends that are happening and how it impacts our role as a planning board here in the community. One of them that's come up, of course, across the state and here is the notion of inclusionary zoning, which many of the Planning Boards have heard about. It's a, it's a, and I'll let Carolyn talk about this much more in a learned experience, experienced way than myself, but another way in that incentivizes builders, developers to include affordable housing in a multi-unit kind of development. So I, we, I just want to understand and make sure that the Planning Board understands the pros and cons of an inclusionary zoning approach, which Northampton does not have at this point, but other communities do. Carolyn, would you mind giving a brief overview of that?
Sure. So inclusionary zoning typically refers to a zoning that actually requires a portion of projects or development to include deed restricted, affordable housing and affordable housing, again, meaning those who are income eligible and not earning more than eighty percent of the area median income would qualify for those units. And so that's a very specific targeted population. The city actually has taken a different approach for decades by providing more of an incentive based instead of what do you call that? Between carrots and sticks. And so and that being through the cluster development zoning as well as subdivision ordinances. There is an incentive for additional units if you include a certain number of affordable units within a project. So there have been a couple of developments that have proceeded using that incentive to include affordable housing. However, they haven't been successful in that they, it, the idea is that you're spreading the cost of building those affordable units that are targeted towards people who don't pay the same costs as the market rate unit buyers do. And so you have to spread, I mean, the cost is the same, but the payment by the end user is not the same. So you have to spread the cost of the development of the affordable housing units across all the units in the project in order to make the bottom line work out for a developer, right? And it takes an enormous number of units to spread out. So the most recent project that we, that availed itself of that incentive was Emerson Way. And you all have, whatever iteration of the Planning Board there is over the last twenty years has seen Emerson Way at various phases. And that was going to be eight units of affordable housing as part of an overall sixty-four unit subdivision. That project is not panning out because those sixty-four units could not uphold and carry the costs for those eight affordable units. So it's been extremely difficult for the developer to be able to balance those sheets and they have lost money on the affordable units. And so we have an example, a clear example of that not working in Northampton, even as an incentive approach. And so there have been from time, there's been from time to time over the decades, especially with the Housing Partnership, they've talked a lot about having, you know, mandatory inclusionary zoning. Typically, what you see is in the eastern part of the state where there's hundreds of units being built at one time on a project, there might be a mandatory inclusionary zoning that says, okay, ten percent of the units you're building have to be dedicated and deed restricted as affordable units. Those developers who are building three hundred units at a time can better balance the cost across the ten percent of those units, you know, if it's just going to be, you know, three, twenty, whatever units, they can do that because of the scale of the project. That hasn't really been the case in Western Mass. It's very hard to, and so that's basically the private sector building the affordable housing and what works in our area because of both scale, you know, the construction costs are the same, but we don't have the same return rate for housing. So we can't, they can't balance the sheet out the way you can in, in, in places where the housing market is much different and stronger. So we haven't gone down that road of requiring, you know, mandatory inclusionary housing and have tried to take the incentive approach. And then also looking at, as you know, trying to create different opportunities for different types of housing. Maybe it's not sub, you know, maybe it's not subsidized affordable housing, but it's more market rate for what we call market rate affordable housing. But the conversation is still ongoing. I think there's still people who think that if we say it, the housing will come. But it's, it's a very difficult calculus to make. And I think we're, we're, what we're trying to do is just create opportunities for the affordable housing developers, the nonprofit affordable housing developers who do the stuff in their sleep, provide opportunities for those things, those projects to happen and then provide incentives to private developers to be able to build, you know, those lower end market rate units, if that makes sense. I think Amherst has tried to have mandatory inclusionary housing. I don't know that it's, I don't know the success rate of that.
Thanks. Yeah, the, yeah, we're, we're, we're in such a an interesting time when it comes to real estate in Northampton and Easton, and I think in the nation. You know, we often hear during our applications when applications come before us.
If it's a private venture, those starter homes are really not doable, given the price of an empty lot or a lot, given the price of what they're paying for a home, given the price of renovation, they can't build homes and make any kind of reasonable profit at that rate of two hundred, two hundred fifty thousand dollars. To me, it seems like starter homes in any kind of affordable range for are really in condo arrangements. A young couple can buy a condo at Damon Road or up at Yankee Hill for a hundred and eighty thousand, still two hundred thousand. It's not a single family home, but it's their home and they can hopefully or develop some equity out of that. But it's more and more difficult for a working family, a young family to get a, a single family home. Back twenty years ago, when the state hospital was being developed, I know there was a great hope that there would be workforce housing there, which would be into two hundred thousand dollars, two hundred fifty thousand dollars, and that didn't really materialize either. So it's just been very, very difficult. And we've heard pretty clearly from builders and real estate agents why that is today. COVID hasn't helped things for sure. Pipeline problems haven't helped things in terms of construction, but that's where we are. So developers who do come in with applications are often, as is evidenced, do a recent application. We okayed down on William Street. It's for four units, but they'll end up, I think, costing about for the new owner, four hundred, four hundred fifty thousand dollars, which again is, is out of the range of most, a lot of families who are just starting out. Other people's ideas about inclusionary zoning or the incentives we offer or kind of the dilemma we're in?
Yes, right. I guess I was asking George this informally before we started, but is there, has there been any discussion? I mean, is there something that we're just curious about or there's not? Is there any specific momentum around this that we're discussing it now or just generally because we've had these issues with people saying they want more smaller homes or something?
Yeah, a good question, David. There's nothing in my mind. I've just heard people asking me privately about inclusionary zoning, would that help our situation? But as Carolyn said, I often tell them, we're just not at that scale of housing to do that. If you remember back about two, three, three years ago, we had a, an application for a large apartment building on South Street. You know, that was going to be sixteen or twenty apartments, I believe. But even those were going to be at a, at a fairly high rate. I don't think we were able at that point to ask that developer to, to, to mandate any kind of affordable affordability there. So, so no, to, to directly answer your question, there's nothing coming from City Council or the Mayor's Office around inclusionary zoning, but I just wanted to air that because I've heard it from a number of people and I've tried to explain it as well as I could, but in case other board members had heard of that, too. So.
Yeah, I think the other, I think occasionally at hearings, people say, why can't you require one of these units to be affordable? And the code doesn't require it, but the reason why the code doesn't require it is because it's really, you know, as I said, the scale doesn't make, even if you had thirteen units and you asked one of them, I mean, you know, now Laura Baker's saying for them, for the affordable housing units, it's costing, it's costing them five hundred thousand, five hundred thousand dollars per unit to build. So basically, if you translate that to a sixteen unit project, now the, the developer is, you know, being asked to put five hundred thousand dollars, essentially, you know, if you take that equation, five hundred thousand dollars on the table to dedicate for something. And then it's not just that one instance, but it has to be managed over time. And there's an administrative cost to ensuring that that rolls over. You know, the first buyer or renter comes in. There's a tail to that, you know, you have to, if it's deed restricted, there's someone that has to oversee that the next person also gets the benefit of that affordability restriction and, and so forth. So that it's not just the upfront cost, which is tremendous, but it has, you know, it lasts forever, essentially. And so when you're just doing a one-off within a building, you know, it's very, it's, it's hard to manage that way, too. And then the other thing that comes up, and I think that you hear a lot is along those lines, why can't you require it's affordable? And none of these are going to be affordable. And I think there's still sort of a misunderstanding of what that term affordable means and that it's not, I mean, a lot of these homes that are coming, you know, people can't conceive of the fact that they themselves could opt to buy them because they're out of their price range and therefore they're not affordable to them. But that is different from the definition of affordable housing. And so that piece of trying to make it affordable for a large part of the population is the other piece of the regulations that we're trying to address through reducing the impediments for new units, creating more opportunities for different types of arrangements for housing on lots, allowing smaller units or an incentive for smaller units. So you could potentially build more so that then people could see themselves being able to afford those new units coming on board.
Right, right. So then we bounce into this neighborhood character. If a developer says, okay, I will build a triplex here, a three-unit building, well, it's going to be a larger scale, probably. It's not going to fit in with a neighborhood of single-family homes. And that, so we're asking that neighborhood to sacrifice what they thought was their historical neighborhood to allow for, you know, a, a larger building to accommodate more people, perhaps at a lower price point, too. You know, we, we, I don't think we've seen that yet. We've seen smaller homes built to the, to the lot at times. But even then, I think we see when somebody builds two homes under our new ordinances, often that home is pretty big. We didn't put any cap on a square foot of the cost of those homes. So people think, well, what's that have to do with affordable housing? How's that helping the city? And to me, it helps the city because we're adding to the stock of housing. So if somebody buys that house, you know, they're moving up, they've got the equity to do that. Hopefully, they're vacating a house and selling a house at a different price point for somebody else who's just building their equity. Nationally, I, I think this is huge. I don't see, I know, I, I've heard that the feds and the state are going to put a lot of money into housing. I don't think we've seen that yet. And I don't know if it'll be incentives for private builders more than it will be for the CDCs of the world and larger affordable.
Putting a lot of money into the housing is not a recipe for lowering the cost of housing. It's just a, it's going to create more housing inflation.
Could you explain that a little bit more?
Pour a billion dollars into housing, doesn't magically create a billion more electricians, right? Like everyone who's making housing, I mean, that seems to be the critical bottleneck in creating housing is like the people out there make housing, the material, the cost of materials and just stretch the labor force thinner and they can charge more and good. We should all like tell our kids to go become plumbers and not electricians and things, but uh, yeah, I don't know. It's a, it's a, it's a tough problem to have, although much more preferable than like being a very poor country with cheap housing. I think it's better to be a rich country with expensive housing. Why do you like to move to this country? It'd be nice to be rich with cheap housing, but I don't know that any countries have that.
You know, the other thing I think you guys have talked about and it's come up in hearings is what is that, you know, what is the character of neighborhoods in Northampton and the, and the thing that is likable about Northampton and what's potentially unique about Northampton is the fact that there isn't a single type of block or neighborhood and that there is variety within neighborhoods of housing type, housing unit, no total number of units. So even if a triplex is developed in one, on one parcel, does that really mean that it's changing the character of that neighborhood? Because if you take two steps back, three steps back and you look around, there are three plexes and, you know, different configurations. But sometimes that's hard to see when you're focused on one parcel.
I think it's, yeah, I've been a builder for thirty-five years. You know, and so it's, it's a complex situation. COVID didn't make it any better. I thought that the, the people that spoke at those last two meetings with the Community Resources Group, I thought that they really, in a very sober way, explained the the challenges that we're facing as a building community. But so much of what we discuss is subjective. We have codes that are somewhat objective. But so much of what we discuss is what is the character of a neighborhood? One person's definition of that character is not the same as the next person's. And a lot of times I see those great old photographs of Northampton on Facebook from like a hundred years ago. And it'll show a neighborhood in Florence or a neighborhood downtown and it looks nothing like it does today, nothing. So there was, you know, two hundred and fifty little steps that got from the way it looked a hundred years ago to now. And there's no reason to think that that's not just going to really continue to, to happen. I mean, my own parents were having to deal with have somebody putting a second unit, their neighbor putting a second unit on their property and they didn't like it. And I understood that, but it was giving the neighbor the opportunity to do exactly what we're trying to do and create more housing. We have a housing deficit. We're trying to create housing in a lot of different ways. And I recently had to move and I wasn't planning on it. And I recently, and, and by me moving, there was a couple that had been waiting for a house for like three years with their two kids and they couldn't wait to get in there. They were thrilled. And you know, it's kind of the nature of the beast. And we used to be able to build for, you know, a hundred dollars a square foot. That was a long time ago. But even building a nine hundred square foot ranch, you know, at a thousand dollars or a, you know, a hundred dollars a square foot. There are two, right now, two hundred and fifty dollars a square foot is also days of old. So a nine hundred square foot ranch costing somewhere in the low two hundreds, it's just impossible to do. Right now, we're running at construction costs of, you know, four to five hundred dollars a square foot. So subjective, is that house affordable? That house is affordable to some people. It's clearly not affordable to others. But it's, it's not, that, that's totally different than what we're classifying affordable. And I have also done a lot of estimating for some of these affordable housing projects and on the money, five hundred thousand dollars a unit. The only way they can build them is because they're getting all, you know, monies. It, there's just, they're more expensive to build than other properties. So it really is a very complex kind of Rubik's Cube of issues that are happening. And it's great hearing from everybody in the neighborhoods. It's really great. But we do, we do have to sort of take a step back and look at what we're trying to accomplish here as a city.
There is one comment in the chat.
Okay.
If you're ready for that.
Listen, yeah.
This is from oops, sorry. Two C Guesting Gate. Many of the homes that come up for sale in Northampton could be starter homes if the city wouldn't let developers, especially Hansel, destroy them and the trees around them and then put up monstrous expensive condos instead. Many of our older, smaller homes could be great starter homes if you let individuals and families purchase them instead of the developer who is at this meeting. Why aren't you inviting open public comment at the beginning of this meeting?
Hello, Two Seat. Thanks for your comment. We did have a, a public comment period before we opened up the hearing. We asked people if they wanted to, to chat. There's nobody in the audience who came to the podium, but, but thanks, we did offer that. I'm sure you missed it. In, in regards to your question about developers buying homes, again, you know, this is a free market. Somebody, we all know that homes are, a price is put out there on the Realtors List. People bid on that. The, the house goes to the highest bidder. A homeowner, if he or she would like to, could refuse that bid and give it to another lower bid because they like that family. But that's very unusual. So those homes that are being sold by our neighbors, you know, they're trying to get the best that they can at this point, the best price for their equity so they can do other things. We can't dictate who homes are sold to or the price of homes that they're sold to. That just doesn't happen here in Northampton or anywhere else, I don't think in America. Anybody else want to respond to that comment?
I'll say that it, there's not as, as many people looking to buy and renovate homes now either. I mean, houses go on the market that are, you know, fixer-uppers need a lot of work and anybody's got a shot at them. And you know, it, it's not as easy to to make that work financially now with the cost of, of, of building. So I, I, I don't know this as a fact, but I'm assuming that there are less people bidding for those than maybe there were two years ago.
And, and the price per square foot is the same.
Yeah.
You're doing with. So even if you buy a fixer-upper.
Sometimes it's more. I mean, as somebody who's been dealing with something like mold, I could tell you that getting an older home that maybe had some deferred maintenance going on, that's had leaks in it or has a wet basement. And you try and, and renovate that into something that's livable and that's safe, you can spend more doing a renovation than a new build.
This is a, a good place maybe to segue into this piece of, the, the other piece that makes construction expensive now, too, is a community like ours, we're asking developers, builders for new construction to be really mindful about kind of the energy around our, our net zero programming. So Carolyn, would you just give us a quick little summary about where the city is with those? those?
Sure, with, we, you know, as the, the advocacy continues for trying to um, electrify buildings and push that um, through in any code manner that's possible. In Massachusetts, the zoning code cannot overstep the bounds of the building code. And so it's not through zoning that, I mean, it's really the, the purview of the building code and that's addressed not in Northampton, but we have the state building code and um, there are, there is action at the state level and we just, I think, just have a new building code and David can um, probably speak to that a little bit more. Um, but sort of on the zoning side, to skirt that or to attempt to skirt that, the zoning has been amended to essentially cloak it in an incentive. And so if the board is giving an incentive for a unit and um, then um, the board could require all electric utilities, so, or fossil fuel-free um, utilities. Um, however, you know, that, that took some massaging of the language to be in the um, zoning um, that way. Um, and we still don't know if the, you know, it's there and we're requiring that of people. But the bottom line is it really is a building code issue and, and we're also working on that front. We, meaning collectively people in the Commonwealth. And so the next iteration of the building code has different standards now to meet certain energy um, thresholds. And you can do that by going all electric or you can do that by other means, but there's sort of an, a pick list, an option depending on what kind of project you have. There is also a push to um, for Northampton to become an opt-in municipality to do um, stretch energy code, stretch plus.
Right, the new version, right.
No, but even beyond that. So um, and that would have to be then adopted by city council as the co- as the new building code. But it does put a financial, it, it changes the calculus in some situations and it would also be affect renovations. So if you're a single-family homeowner or you own a duplex and you need to upgrade your furnace because it's dead in the middle of winter and then all of a sudden you're told, well, you're gonna have to change your whole system because now we have this new code. Um, you know, that's something that's gonna be debated as to at what point that becomes um, you know, um, implemented and, and affected. So that is def- I mean, all of those conversations are um, on the, right now, happening um, relative to the building code. So you're gonna see that probably coming popping to the forefront and um, the Energy and Sustainability Commission is certainly pushing to have the city consider and the some, there are a couple of city councillors who are working on code, um, an ordinance to um, opt in to this um, specialized um, code. Um, but it'll be part of the public conversation and it's outside of zoning.
Yeah, and, and I know that Northampton, like, there's like a tradition of like, we're Northampton, we have to go out and show everyone, you know, what Cambridge couldn't do or whatever, but I think um, on electrification specifically, we put ourselves at a huge risk if we do not stick with where the state or the regional power distribution is. Because we do not want to find out on a negative ten degree day that we've overdone it on electrification. And there's like fifty percent of our houses can't heat themselves, like not a good idea. You know, we should be going along with the regional power authorities to make sure that the grid can handle what we want to happen. And that's the way to, to what future we're electrification, not like one town deciding.
Yep.
Cause we don't generate the power here, even if we had a lot of solar. That, that doesn't get you from negative ten to seventy degrees.
Well, it's also still a dirty grid, right, is what they call. So, but the idea really is if you're going to replace your, you know, if you're going to be replacing a system, that's a once every, well, now it's down to probably fifteen years. It used to be thirty or forty years, but you know, if you don't do it now, then the next time you're gonna do it is fifteen years from now. And so have you lost that? You know, those years in between. And so I think that's the balance is to say, well, if you're gonna be making this investment as a renovation, you know, in your home, for example, or building new. Um, you know, and the grid suddenly gets better, not suddenly, but finally, you know, we reach a point where it's much cleaner in seven or eight years, but you still have your system that you invested, haven't gotten your return. Um, so that's the reason for, you know, getting people in the door now. Um, so.
Yeah. And I think it also, th- there's a piece about the city's own goal of carbon neutrality by twenty thirty.
For city, for municipal operations and buildings, yeah, and twenty fifty for the community, right.
So, and how do we get there? We all realize that that's a very important piece for our, our planet. How do we get there? Can we do it if we, if we continue to rely on fossil fuels, um, older homes that are uninsulated. So yeah, there's a that kind of subtle pressure to that, that's moving us forward. So and, and your point, I think is somewhat analogous to our, our national push now to sell and buy electric cars and the people's fear that the grid, of course, isn't ready for that. Um, and how do we get the grid to a place where there's enough charging stations and enough robustness for all of my neighbors to have those, you know, tier three charges on their, on their garages. So people are nervous about getting electric cars because the grid isn't compatible yet um, to that.
I think, you know, the other night, um, Dory Brooks was talking about, um, you know, the differences between renovating and building new and how the building code, you know, you have this really tight envelope and it's much easier to meet all of those standards with new construction. And she was talking about the renovation costs and how even you can put so much money into renovating, but you're not, you're still not gonna get to that and that there's, so there's the other piece about electrification, but also reduction, right? So reducing the, your use and you can do that by, through insulation, but you can only do so much of that in an existing home, but but your point is, we, every, you know, we need to try sort of all of these strategies and um, cause one, there's not gonna be one magic bullet and we have so much housing stock anyway. Um, that it's gonna take time and so to the extent that we can push what we can now um, is, I think, the goal.
Yeah.
We have another chat question, like, um, me to read it?
Sure, please do.
Whoops, sorry. This is um, sorry, from Nan Smith, I think. Uh, would stricter ordinances against teardowns of single-family homes help give people a shot at fixer-uppers? They won't likely be capable of outbidding a contractor, question mark, that would allow greater inclusion. Can you read that again? Would stricter ordinances against, or so prohibiting teardowns of single-family homes help give people a shot at fixer-uppers? They won't likely be capable of outbidding a contractor, question mark, that would allow greater inclusion. So I think you answered that a little bit with your, you know, about dictating who buys and not. But that also came up the other night um, about um, the disincentive, I mean, so the, the total cost of meeting, building codes for older homes, so fixing up older homes. Um, there isn't a built-in um, acknowledgement of the embedded carbon and the value that that has for older homes. And so when you put all the um, variables on the table, Dory Brooks was saying that um, that's wh- when you come to a conclusion much more quickly, that it's um, more cost-effective to demolish in some cases than to renovate because you're gonna have such a high cost to meet the current building codes. And so again, sort of zoning ordinances don't address demolitions. Um, it's really a building code issue.
And again, we can't legislate who buys a home from somebody who has their home up for sale. Um, we can't portion ten percent of all um, real estate sales will be to individual homeowners rather than somebody who might have a, a, a builder, single outside or on their truck. Um, it just doesn't work that way.
Um, also, like, we should acknowledge also, like, that there's an experiential difference. If you live in a neighborhood and the house next to you sells for two hundred thousand dollars to some young family and then over the next three years, they put the two hundred thousand dollars of their own money into it and build an addition and make it look real nice. It's real cute. But if a developer buys it for two hundred thousand dollars and builds a new house for four hundred thousand dollars and sells it to somebody from New York, it feels real bad. And it's the same outcome. And if you move into that neighborhood two years later, you probably would never know the difference. But if you live through that, I mean, I think we can acknowledge that, like, that's a different experience for the neighborhood. But I think going back to like neighborhood character, like, these are strong neighborhoods that will survive that kind of, um, you know, momentary disruption. And I think like we've seen Bay State and I think even William Street will survive, you know? There's, there's stuff in the Gazette from the eighties of William Street, like uh, character being destroyed by something that was turned into a condo back then and, and William Street didn't just get destroyed. So I don't think it invalidates people's feelings about it because it's, it feels hard.
Yep.
But like people will survive.
Thank you. Okie doke. All right. Well, those are a couple of things, you know, we haven't been at this a long time yet, but those are a couple of things that have come up in the past year, uh, two years around many of the applications that have come in front of us. Um, and I just personally wanted to have a time to kinda uh, talk through those um, without having the applicant or the neighborhood right here, um, and being faced with kind of our own decision on that. Um, it's very helpful. Um, and I'm, I'm just struck how Northampton is not doing this alone. Every community is faced with these kind of, this housing dilemma. These uh, construction. Um, Northampton has a problem with people who are unhoused on our city streets. Um, I wish there was housing for all of those. Um, you know, that uh, that would certainly go a long way in helping that situation downtown and in other cities. Um, but, but how we get there, I'm not sure with a huge influx of of federal dollars. And I think as David rightly put it, all of a sudden you just can't um, have this building boom without the conduit of supplies and tradesmen to do that. Yeah, we don't, uh, the planning board doesn't get into our unhoused uh, situation and dilemma in Northampton. Um, but certainly that's a, a big one of the issues that's faced by our downtown. Um, is, you know, how we are dealing, um, how long that, say, the resiliency center is taking to come online and what happens there and uh, the support services for people. But boy, if we had just more housing that was affordable and that people could move into and, you know, live by themselves, small studios, I think it would go a long way and in really mitigating some of that, but um, we're not there yet for sure.
I also add, um, I'm, I'm the person who goes to the PB PC meetings from this committee and uh, and they're doing like a strategic, they're doing like a strategic plan to figure out how to do a strategic plan. It is from what I can understand is what they're doing right now, but um, in any event, I think the lack of regional planning that exists in basically New England, but definitely Massachusetts. I mean, to be honest, like, we look at affordable housing if it's in the square of Northampton, but if we go over one of those lines, it's not affordable. And we have pretty good affordable housing, or subsidized housing numbers, I should say. I wouldn't say we have good affordability, but when you look at the entire Pioneer Valley, you know, we do have a huge range of different housing types and there's plenty of housing in many of the communities very close to here where you can do those things. And just because it's not in Northampton doesn't mean our community doesn't have housing though. I, I would encourage the PB PC to help the different towns think more regionally, which there's a lot of uh, resistance to for good reasons, I guess, but you know, I, I think it's kind of, it's kind of silly that we only look to the reporters.
Right, right, right. No, and, and that's very true. David uh, referenced the PVC, PB PC, which is the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, um, because often I, I think that's a really good point. Many of these issues are regionally based. And Northampton has done a good job of taking on some of those um, pressures, I think, from other communities. Um, but yeah, it's, it's a regional thing that needs to be addressed regionally, whether it's housing or trans- better transportation, um, health services, things of that nature. Yeah. Alrighty, other kind of topics that, once in a while, when we finish a meeting, a planning board meeting, um, the application, the applicants have gone away, we say to Carolyn, hey, how about this or how about that? And we talk a little bit off the record. I don't know if there's any other larger issues that folks would like to explore at a future date. Um, such as these housing ones. Um, w- we hear a lot lately about certainly the the moans and groans that I feel very closely about trees being removed in order to have a building put up or in order to do solar. That's a real tricky one. Um, again, and there's really merit on both sides of that equation. Um, you know, Northampton has done a great job of, of, in terms of trying to rebuild its urban tree canopy. It's gonna take years for these small trees that we see on the city streets to kind of provide that shade and carbon sequestration that we want, but it's coming. Um, and again, that, that sometimes is a very tough thing for a neighborhood to lose trees or specific neighbors to lose trees, but um, you know, we take that case by case when an application comes in front of us. I know Rich Parisaleti was at the meeting the other day and spoke about that and he's had some very, who's the tree ward in Northampton? And has some very interesting situations. Um, just recently, we saw in the Gazette where a gentleman wants to take down a city tree because it's threatening his home and, you know, the city doesn't really wanna do that. And that's the reverse side of, whereas a city wants to take down a tree for such and such purpose and the residents say, no, no, you can't take that down. Um, much like the merry maple next door in Amherst, you know, those are all tough things when we get to love a tree. So you know, we uh, we look at those, the Northampton tree ordinance um, at times, and I think there's some conversation with the uh, um, the tree commission. I forget, it's a thistle title, you know, about looking at those and over time and seeing if they need revision. So there are distinct ordinances sometimes that um, the city council or other boards are looking at to make sure that they're up to date with what's happening in our world. Trees are one of them. Um, lighting is another one. Sometimes we go through lighting reviews here with large applications. I'm not very versed in that. David, as an architect, or maybe Melissa with your experience is a little bit more um, up to date with that. And I know there's a very strong voice around dark skies in Northampton. Um, at some point, I, unfortunately, I had talked about trying to get us together for a site visit to go around the city um, with a fellow who works for the city. John Frye, who would wo- work with uh, the instrumentation called the light meter to kind of give us different examples of where there's too much glare and not enough glare and how that impacts neighborhoods, how that impacts people's feeling of security. So that's something, again, that we could spend a little bit more time on. So when an application comes in front of us, I feel more grounded in kind of responding to their um, request. I know we ran up against that in the recent YMCA application around their lighting and what it meant and where, what, how much flexibility we had in asking them to turn the lights off at a certain point, what that meant to the neighborhood, what that meant to their customers leaving the building. So there's a lot of nuances there too. But but Carolyn, thanks. You've done a great job in keeping all those things kind of um, fresh in our minds and an ability to explain them to us.
Yeah, that, that, well, it reminds me that there is a lighting ordinance update due. I have it out there.
Do you? Okay, all right.
Um, there was one other chat message that came in from.
There's one other, thanks. Message that came in while you were talking under, um, uh, sort of following up on the last um, quote, text, um, teardowns are more profitable to builders. We are encouraging teardowns. One oh seven William Street, single family for two hundred eight thousand, bought by builder with projected eight condo unit for four hundred K plus. Not supporting inclusion. It's not about character, it's about inclusion.
But I think you guys talked about that in your.
And inclusion in this sense is meant. That's a bit of a buzzword, I get kind of confused, is it equity? Is it allowing everybody and anybody to move into my neighborhood? I'm sure I can't ask that, what do people take from the word inclusionary? And that.
She just texted again, income, people with modest incomes, I guess.
I see, yeah, yeah.
I mean, I think you did talk about that.
In the context of the fact that, you know, two hundred eight thousand, it was not that. In particular example was a shell, so it wasn't move-in condition. So it wasn't as though someone could move in and fix it up slowly over time and it would take another two hundred thousand to get it to a point. Where someone could get a certificate of occupancy. And then, of course. That goes back to your comments, David, I think about, you know, if it's four hundred thousand in the end per unit. Does it matter? You know, the impact may be different during the construction and and how it changes, but. The end result can be the same.
Because now we have eight people.
Right.
Than one.
Right, right.
Better.
Eight opportunities for eight households.
Walk from downtown.
To walk and frequent our downtown. There's also a lending issue with that. She can't move into a shell. So because a lender won't, won't, as far as I know. You know, lend money on something that doesn't have a certificate of occupancy. So those those types of situations would have to be cash buyers as well. So. You know, there's, there's lots of little layers to it all.
Sure.
I think, I I think we have a dynamic, I think we see in North Hampton, you see this in a lot of very stable places where people come and stay for a long time. Is that they bought their house a long time ago and it was like multiple housing cycles back and multiple inflation cycles back. And I think the fact is, if you look at, even though I think the public school teachers should be paid more, if you have a couple, that's two public school teachers. They can afford a much more bigger mortgage than they could in nineteen eighty-two or whenever. You know, I wish they could afford more, honestly, but I think that's the nature of, you know, what Elizabeth Warren calls the the two income family trap. I mean, things cost more because families have more money than they did.
And and again, I'll say that that person who bought the house perhaps forty years ago at a hundred thousand dollars. Now the boom has come, they want to cash out at a rate as high as they can. Ideally, they could say to a young family, okay, I'm gonna sell it to you for, you know, a hundred and fifty thousand. Because I know you want to make it go, but I'm being offered this over here. So nature as it is, they're gonna go for that higher cost, so that higher price.
It does happen, it's usually their kids though.
Right, right, for a dollar, yeah. Carolyn, you mentioned that you were gonna give us a little forecast of our next six months, maybe at the planning board.
Well, the next month is very light, so no permits have come in. We, I know we have a couple of big projects on the cusp of being filed, but they're not in yet. So February, there are no permits, we don't actually have it, we won't have a public hearing for the ninth. So I, the February twenty-third, in school vacation week. I'm calling cancellation on that meeting to help everyone who's in the system.
You're in the system.
Same system. We both have twins, yeah, and same.
You occupy multiple. So then. So I imagine that in March, there'll be one of these bigger projects that will be coming forward, if not both. We we have a couple of zoning, minor zoning amendments, plus if I do ever wrangle that lighting. I should put that back on the front burner. And then, yeah, so.
That project on King Street ever come back as a permit? The one with the robot.
Working on it.
They are still working on it?
Yes, yes.
For a building permit to.
Well, I just, I had a feeling it came back, it would come back with some amendments because there are certain things seemed infeasible to me. But.
And then. Yeah, so that, there are probably a couple of those bigger projects that'll take us at least till through May, I would think.
Okay, yeah, great, great. Yeah, it's interesting that we we often see a lot of applications that come through us and we'll give them an okay and they'll go away. And nothing materializes, you know, a lot of it is around funding, right, during these uncertain times. And each one of our applications, depending whether it's a site, site review or a special permit. They have a different window that they need to initiate building, right? Because I, when I drive around downtown, I sometimes scratch my head and say, geez, I thought that was gonna be such and such and it isn't. There's no hard and fast way to say that an applicant has three years, thirty-six months.
Oh, yeah, so. Covid disrupted the timelines, so things that, there was a, there was a, an extension of allowances. To build out under permits that were granted. Typically, it's a three-year window that you have to substantially start a project. There, we're still probably working off a few of those that were granted just before or during Covid. So they'll have a little bit of a longer window. Otherwise, they they would have to come back if it's for an amendment or an extension of permit.
Alrighty, I think we maybe had a set of minutes to approve from.
The twelve.
From January twelfth. That was our discussion of.
Ferrari.
Ferrari. That's right, alright, is there a motion to approve those minutes?
I think we're supposed to wait at least ninety days before we see the minutes, but I'll approve it anyway.
Oh, that's mean.
It was so quick, I'm like, I remember this.
Alright.
Good job, I I I move, we approve the minutes.
Thank you, is there a second? Thanks, Stacy. So the motion's been made and approved, any discussion? Alright, all those in favor? Thank you. Any other chat messages there that we, before we close the hearing? Alright, so please, if you have other issues that during our applications, during our regular hearings, it come up. We want to have more information about that and you feel it needs some kind of board discussion, please raise that so we can try to do these at times. Carolyn also sent out a great little video link for something that was done by the city around affordable housing. And our friend David played a nice cameo role in that, that everybody gets a look at it. Yeah, yeah.
I thought Wayne Wayne did a great job and Carolyn.
And Carol, yeah.
Goes without saying, did a great job. No one should ever have to see themselves on a video, it's horrible.
There is one other chat comment from a Chris Tate, he says, move to a jerk.
Hello, Chris, motion's been made to adjourn at eight ten? Eight oh nine is.
I'll second it.
Motion's made, it's seconded, okay, all those in favor? Alright, thank you for coming in tonight, folks, braving that storm from yesterday.